Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this town meeting to order. Would you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. Will you continue to protect our citizens and lead this board in a Christ-like way? I pray for the people of this town and those that may be in need this evening. I ask this in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you. Next is an approval of minutes from the September 8th, 2015 town meeting. I have a copy of that here. Can I get a motion to approve this meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meetings pass, thank you. A reporting of the executive session will be done briefly. It has been brought to my attention that the executive board is still in conference, and they are meeting with the town administrator, so hopefully by the end of this meeting, they will be finished and be able to give a report. But the last that I was told, they are still in conference. The first thing on our agenda is actually citizens' input, because we do not have any public presentations or business meeting items this evening. Thank you, Chief. All right, Mr. Fisher, you are first actually on the agenda. Would you like to speak this evening?
Well, I... I was on the last page, not the first page.
Okay, is there more than one page?
There's a whole nother page.
All right, thank you. It's good to see this amount of people out here this evening. All right, perfect. You can go ahead, Mr. Fisher, and then I'll follow up with the rest.
Well, I would like to comment on Mr. Othonreath's presentation at the last town meeting and present the facts as I know it. The... It was done in accordance with the approved development plan for Ryan Drive. The engineer was Frederick Ward and Associates. So if there's anything wrong with it, Frederick Ward being charged, there was bank-run gravel base, which was acceptable at that time as road. Most of the roads, when they were dirt roads around here, were built from bank-run gravel. So it's unacceptable. At one time, Walnut Street was a gravel road, and they blacktopped it over the gravel base. So bank-run gravel was required to have high clay content. So I haven't been able to determine when they switched. It is now not an accepted base for a paved road. And that's... The other factor is, you know, we did do things in the past. We weren't all trying to steal from the town. There were some people that didn't have the necessary skills and aptitudes to do the job that needs to be done, but, you know, we all have our shortcomings. But I believe that most of the people that served did it with good intentions, and I think it's very important for town officials to attend the training sessions of Maryland Municipal League. And I just believe that we should check our facts out before we start running our mouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, for expressing your opinion. Ms. Maynard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm back again. When you have trees removed from your property, do you need to have permission from the town?
Well, I mean, I'm pretty sure if I remember correctly, it comes down to how large the trees are and how mature. Is that correct?
Yeah, it depends. Like, if it's a wetland, it wouldn't be from the town, but...
No, it's not the wetlands.
Okay.
Well, some days it's the wetlands, but...
There... I believe that there is a permit that you need to get for removing a large tree, so...
Well, it's just a pine tree and two small evergreen trees.
Yeah, and I think, as the mayor was saying, it's the size of the tree, but the town administrator obviously is the expert on that, and depending on the size of it, you would need to let someone know that you were doing that. But if it's a smaller tree that you planted, then... But I would still check. And I think the town administrator is the one that's going to be able to give you that clear understanding of what you would need to do.
Can I put my two cents in?
Absolutely, Ms. ...
If you do need a permit if the tree is living, if the tree does die, you don't need a permit.
Or is dying.
You know, if the tree is dead or dying, diseased...
It's not, it's just I want to get the roots out from underneath my house, that's my thing.
I think you need a permit for that. I had to have a permit for one tree that I cut down, and the ones that died, I didn't need a permit.
And it also involves misutility as far as the roots.
But I just...
Oh, it's not even near that, because I know where the yard's been marked out enough.
Okay.
Okay. We'll get you a firm answer before you leave this evening.
Tree remover, I got mine, tree remover, two, get the permit.
Okay. Last evening, there was an issue, and I did call the police in on the issue. Down on Valley View, they have the... Was it the street lamp reduction at the old Conkle store, which is great? But now we're having parking issues. I mean, they were... The parking lots were filled, Crothers was filled, up by the new store was filled, and they're parking on the side of the street. Now, the... I know his name is Herbert, I don't know what his last name is. He said there was nothing he could do. But, I mean, they were parked from the end, they're at Valley View and Main Street, all the way down. That's only a one-way in, one-way out. You get cars piled up there, it's very... It's going to cause, I'm afraid, there's going to be some problems. And then the kids are hanging out, which is fine, but it's just, you know, somebody decides they got to get out, they come up on the sidewalks. I have a fence there, I don't need it torn up. Kids are hanging around, we don't need somebody hit. So, but he said there was nothing they can do. But at one time, the curbs were painted yellow, but they are no longer painted yellow. And there was a sign at one time, and it's even down, about not parking on that side of the street, so we need to...
I'm sure Commissioner Othonreath wouldn't have an issue with going down there again and checking that out, since he's in charge of streets and sidewalks. So we definitely can get that looked into.
All right. That's all I needed, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Mrs. Emsley? All right, thank you. Ms. Osborne? All right, thank you. Mr. Naughton?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak this evening? Hearing none, we're going to move into staff reports. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. First off, last night around 11:30, there was an incident down in Maple Heights where the state police called in a K-9 and a helicopter. I know there were many calls this morning and last night looking for information. Typically, when we are conducting some type of police tactics, we're not going to give you a full story, because, one, we need to keep our officers safe; two, we don't want you to intervene; and, three, we don't have the ability to get it out at that point in time. Last night's incident, there was a notification error made, and that error was, I didn't get notified. We've corrected that. It should not happen again, and we will be able to disseminate the information in a more timely fashion. What I can say about the incident was, it is not a dangerous person that we were looking for. It was someone that did not appear for court, and he chose to flee in a very different manner by jumping from a window. But we know who it is, we know where he typically goes, and we will apprehend him pretty soon. Any questions about that topic? All right. For the Commissioners, you did not receive a report like you usually do, the bi-weekly report. And that is because the entire county has transitioned to a countywide reporting system. That means every law enforcement agency in the county, with the exception of the state police, is now using the same forms to do police work. We're using the same computer systems. That means the information sharing has gone from about 75% to 100% with this project going online. It also puts us all under the same dispatching. We're able to see and share information a lot easier. It also gives us an outlook of the... You could put a map up on one of these computers, and I can see where every law enforcement agent is in this county. We underwent that last week, and it has had some glitches. It's not perfect, but for the most part, it's going to be a better system than what we've used, more efficient, and it would probably lead to a lot more law enforcement work getting done, because the information is easily accessible. With that being said, I don't have too much more of a report. I don't have any additional information to share for now, unless there's any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
Can I come back to you? We have a problem with the computer.
Absolutely. All right. My report is pretty brief this evening. I did want to say that I did attend Thank a Cop Day in Charlestown. It was a wonderful event put on by the Cecil County Sheriff's Department. All officers, including Officer McKinney from the Rising Sun Police Department, were there, so they represented all the different Cecil County municipalities, and the county executive was there as well. It was a great event, and it was nice just to pause for a few hours and thank the police department for all they do for us. I did want to say that Donate Life Month, which is going on right now, which is why you see the green lights throughout town, is going very well. The staff has reported to me that they have had a few people pick up donation forms that weren't donors before that are going to change their mind and donate, so that's great. This is in honor, of course, of Benjamin Larson, who tragically lost his life in a motorcycle accident, and a motorist pulled out in front of him, and he was killed, and his organs actually saved six people. So it's going great. Donate Life Month is going great. I did want to say, I received this... Mr. Fisher actually spoke about the Maryland Municipal League. I received this from the University of Maryland College Park, which is for their Academy for Excellence in Local Governance. This was presented to me and to a few other. We had about 90 in my class, including the county executive, that received this from the University of Maryland for Excellence in Local Governance. So I thank them for this and for all the education that the Maryland Municipal League provides to municipal officials, because this is a position that doesn't really have training or formal training at all. So the Maryland Municipal League provides that for us, and the classes are very beneficial with technology and laws constantly changing. It's good to be on the forefront of learning with the University of Maryland. That concludes my report, and we are going to move on to the Historical Preservation Commission.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have too much to report, other than the fact that it's that time of year when we're going to have the reenactment down at the park. That'll be October 3rd, 4th, and 5th. We have lined up between 200 and 300 schoolchildren that'll be coming through on Friday morning. They range in from kindergarten up through the 8th grade. Our own little middle school here is bringing 200 students by themselves. They'll be walking down to the park on Friday morning at around sometime between 8:00 and 9:30. So if you're out driving, be alert that there'll be a large contingent of students going across Main Street. The chief walked out, I just want to touch base with him, and maybe he can have an officer look out for that large contingent. Short of that, there'll be a reenactment on Saturday. I believe they'll start somewhere around 1:00. And then there'll be one again on Sunday. And I believe the one on Sunday starts at 2:00. In between that, you're free to visit each station. They mark stations for different types of soldiers and activities that go on or went on during the Civil War. And then Saturday night, after dinner, there will be a dance, a period dance. There is a caller coming in who will be calling it, and there's a band coming in that'll be playing that kind of music. It's not only open to the reenactors, it is open to the public. If you want to come down and learn how to do the Virginia Reel, why, feel free, because that's one of the dances that they do. Don't ask me what the others are, I only know the Virginia Reel. With that, we are holding meetings on the second Wednesday of every month. Public again is welcome. We have changed the hours of the museum. The second Saturday of the month, instead of being open... The museum being open at 1:00 to 4:00, we are opening it at 4:00 and keeping it open through 7:00. And that's so that we can participate with the Arts Council in a joint venture. We're going... It's an experiment, we'll see how it goes. So far, it's been successful. I think the last report I had, the last Saturday that we did it, there were some 40 people came through. So that seems to be working advantageous for both organizations, so... With that, anybody have any questions? If not, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mummy. Any old business this evening? Any new business? The one thing I did want to add, and I would be remiss if I didn't add this, is that our Spooktacular this year is going to be October 24th from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And if you are interested in donating your time, donating monetarily, or if you just want to come out and be a vendor, I'm going to give you this email address. It's spooktacular15@gmail.com. And Desiree Davis has graciously agreed to help me with event coordination again this year. And we are really excited for all the neat things that we're going to have, all free activities for the kids, from pumpkin paintings to pony rides to a mechanical bull to a rock climbing wall. And then Jane's United Methodist Church has graciously agreed to partner with us, and they are going to be trunk-or-treating down at their church. So what we're going to do is we're going to take a hayride down there as well. So that'll be just a wonderful time for our community to come out and enjoy a free event. So I'm excited about that. Town Administrator, do you have your report?
Yes, I do.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. First of all, I want to apologize for running a little late. The Ethics Board was meeting downstairs. Mayor, I would think the first thing I need to do is back up and read the executive session report.
That would be great, thank you.
The... This is an executive session report for the Rising Sun Ethics Board, who met on September 22nd at 6:00 p.m. on the second floor of the town hall. A motion was made by Board Member Slayball, seconded by Board Member Fox, to open the meeting. That vote was 2 to 0. And a motion to hold an executive session was made by Board Member Fox and seconded by Board Member Slayball. That motion passed 2 to 0. The reason for the executive session is provided for by the Maryland Open Meetings Act was, number one, to discuss personnel or officials of whom it has jurisdiction over; and then the second reason was to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice. The topics discussed at the meeting was review of the campaign finance forms for all candidates and ethics forms, which are a requirement for candidates to file for the town elections. The persons present at the meeting was the town attorney Jay Gallow and the town administrator Calvin A. Bottomberger, Jr. There were no action items taken at the meeting, so there was a motion by Board Member Slayball, seconded by Board Member Fox, to leave executive session, and then that vote passed 2 to 0. A motion was made by Board Member Fox, seconded by Board Member Slayball, to adjourn that meeting, and that meeting was adjourned at 7:01 p.m. With that, Mayor, I was going to go on to the next item in my report, because it segues, and that is a list of candidates. One of the things I want to back up and explain is, if you recall, before the charter was changed, the town used to take nominations from the floor at the last... At the annual meeting. And so that, in essence, would create a two-week window in which candidates would be known, and then the election would be held. But when the town moved to comply with the state requirements for ethics forms, and then also moved to create a campaign finance form, obviously, there wasn't going to be enough time, a two-week period, to have somebody stand up at a town meeting and say, you know, essentially, "I'd like to be an elected official," and be able to review that. So we went to the 30-day transitional period where applicants would divulge their intent 30 days in advance to give the appropriate boards the time to look at documents. So I want to say that, because there was a little bit of a panic over the last couple of days, like the list of people had to get out there real quick. The lists that I have are unofficial from the standpoint of that there are... As a result of this meeting tonight, there are some minor, and I say minor, is minor pieces of information that still need to be turned in in terms of financial disclosure forms and campaign finance forms. And basically, what it comes down to is just human error or possibly getting confused by the form or whatever. So the Ethics Board is going to meet again. I'm going to be preparing a letter based upon what the Ethics Board identified, and that will be sent to the candidates tomorrow. And then, as always, we'll work with them to get the required information in there. One of the things I wanted to also talk about in reference to this, and give me a second to bring this document up. The unofficial list of candidates is as follows for Board of Commissioners. This is a four-year term. The election is October 19th, I believe, that Monday, and then the board members would be sworn in office the second Tuesday in November, or first town meeting in November. So right now, the unofficial list of candidates is Bob Fisher, Dale Gerber, Jr., Brian LaSheer, Joanne Osborne, and Joseph Shepherd. Those are the five individuals running for the two positions of Commissioners. I think it's also important, because we're really in getting into this, providing transparency, and that's a key word I want you to think of, is transparency. The reason why the list is unofficial is because candidates are required to meet certain qualifications and provide certain documents, such as proof of age, proof of citizenship, proof of residency, and be free of criminal record. In addition, candidates are required to submit financial disclosure forms that are intended to make public any possible conflicts or financial relationships that could influence decision-making in the future. This does not disqualify a candidate based upon what they put down, and only makes these potential conflicts public to the voters. Voters have a right to know if there are conflicts, or potential conflicts. Candidates are also required to file campaign finance forms, which provides a proper accounting of donations that they receive regarding their candidacy and to identify any special interest groups, persons, or entities that may be funding the candidate's campaign, and to identify any relationships that could influence decision-making in the future. Again, this does not disqualify a candidate, and only makes these potential conflicts public to the voters, so that they are aware of them. Candidates, however, candidates can be fined or disqualified for failing to provide these forms or offering misleading information. The above documents are reviewed by the Ethics Board for compliance. If any discrepancies are found regarding age, citizenship, residency, or criminal record, a recommendation for further review is made to the Election Board, because at the end of the day, the Election Board is the one who has the final determination on those types of things. So that's a process that we're at. Now, I will tell you, there's no issues, you know, about age, citizenship, residency, or criminal record. It's the campaign finance forms and the financial disclosure forms that do some mistakes, and we need to get those corrected. Here are some closing thoughts. These policies were put in place in large part due to concerns that previous boards received about the validity of candidates from numerous residents. We don't have to go back very far to remember a lot of the questions that previous boards were barraged with of how was this allowed to happen, because the town didn't have any criteria necessarily in place at that time. The package cannot be reviewed by the Ethics Board until the final date for filing. There were no completed applications as of Friday at 2:00 p.m. So people need to... I want residents to understand that. Although we've been announcing these candidate applications out there, we didn't have a completed applicant until 2:00 p.m. on Friday, and then the rest of them started filling in afterwards. So there's no time to get the Ethics Board together. If, you know, if somebody would have applied a month ago, we'd get the Ethics Board together to look at that application, so they... It would be clear that that was an official candidate. But again, we didn't get completed applications until right up to the deadline. The unofficial list of candidates was made available to the media yesterday, Monday, the 21st. And again, we just wanted to make sure that we were making it clear that it's unofficial, because we don't... Look, the town of Rising Sun has had to deal with various things that have happened over the last couple of years, and we've been successful in defense of lawsuits. But sometimes, we have people making the wrong comments in the media. And it's not a fault of the media, the media's doing a story. But sometimes, we have people speaking that really should not be speaking or making comments that are not within the context of exactly what is happening. And that has been a reality with the town, and that's why we have tried to get more proactive in how we release information. It's not a matter of not being transparent, it's a matter of making sure that the right information gets out there, because at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers of this community that pay the damages and financial impacts as a result of that. So that's a little gist behind the candidate packets. The other thing in moving on in my report, the personnel manual revisions, we did make those changes that were brought out in the past resolution, and the chief has essentially completed the language that we were looking to do on his end. We just have to get a final sign-off by the town attorney for that. If you recall, I gave folks the election protocol suggestions. If you guys can take a look at those and get back to me to see if there's any...
I'm sorry, the... Elected body protocol.
Yeah, the elected body protocol manual. If you guys could get back to me on that, we could get moving on that, because I know there was a desire to get those protocol manual in place. You guys also got some of the sections of the property maintenance code. When everybody's schedule settled down a little bit, we could get together and start having some public discussions about some of the suggestions in there. But that has not minimized the amount of complaints that we still get from frustrated residents in the community about abandoned vehicles, high grass, vacant houses, so forth and so on. If you recall, one of the things I gave to the board was the vacant house registry. That has actually been received very well from a legal standpoint, and we gave it to MML, and they are actually very fascinated by the concept, too. So we might be on the cutting edge of how to deal with the plague of vacant and abandoned houses. And again, we're not trying to get into the business of, you know, necessarily stopping vacant and abandoned houses, the reason why they happen. We just want to minimize the financial and social impact that they have on our community and make those banks that have those abandoned houses, that might be stationed in Illinois or something like that, to know that in the town of Rising Sun, we're just not going to accept a vacant rundown house for two or three years until somebody decides what to do with it. So that's the cutting edge that we're talking about. So that's the cutting edge that we're talking about. I've had a lot of questions regarding Bigfoots. They have applied and have been approved for a demolition permit down there. They were getting hung up with the insurance company and settling out the subrogation on that, and I don't even, I'm not even sure the subrogation has actually taken place. I just know that the property owner has received his insurance check payout, so he can now move forward with the demolition. That is supposed to hope, that is supposed to happen this week, the actual demolition. And they estimate it to be about a three- or four-day process for that demolition. The other thing that I wanted to show you, and this is about, you know, some exciting things that we have been doing, and it has been a while since we talked about some of these things, but the zoning map update. If you remember, a while back, we were having KCI address a new digital zoning map for us. And if you recall, before we went down that road, this was the town's zoning map, which, again, I always joke and show how our zoning map, if you can follow my cursor here, that is Main Street, which dead-ends right a little bit past Bucks and goes off into nowhere, and then picks up down here, and then Mount Street over here just stops before you get to Triangle Park on that side. So that's how bad our zoning map was before. So that's why we took the initiative to get state-of-the-art and get a zoning map together here. So this is pretty cool. This is going to be on the county's GIS mapping system. If you go on the county's website, we have entered into an agreement to have our zoning map listed, so residents, businesses, whatever, can now start to get on the county's GIS site to, right now, look at the individual parcels that are in the community. The properties are outlined in black, so you can see all these black lines, they represent the properties. If you click on any of those properties, it'll show you the information on the property, that particular property. It also has the color coded, and obviously, these colored areas are the Town of Rising Sun. It'll show you what the zoning is in those given areas. And then the other thing that we're adding to it is if I take away the zoning here, you can see that what we have underneath it is our street program, or our road restoration program. If you recall, a couple months back, we took an initiative to have the engineers come in and evaluate every aspect of our roads, from the sidewalk, the curbing, the storm drains, and the conditions of the roads themselves. And so the color chart is essentially, red is a road that needs to be dealt with right away, orange is the next severe, yellow is the third, light green is the fourth, and dark green is the fifth. So we haven't quite, on the green, the light green and the dark green, we're not sitting here telling anybody that they have to be replaced in five or six years. What we're saying is they should be reevaluated about every year, year and a half, to see if they should change in writing. The red and the orange, the red, orange, and the yellow, the red is the one we are taking care of this year, and you see, that is specifically Ryan Drive here. The yellow and the green, the yellow and the orange, we are having the engineer for next year's budget cycle start to give us estimates of what it would cost to do all those streets in their totality, and then, as we get closer, we would evaluate which ones we can afford to do and actually move forward with that. So we're trying to not forget about our infrastructure repair and keep it at the forefront. So this is pretty cool to have the zoning map and all that information up here. The other thing that we did is we also had storm drains listed. And again, you have a color coordination of red, yellow, and blue, and that's basically storm drains that are in various stages of decay. And for the most part, our storm drains are not too bad. Over the last couple of years, you might recall, we did a lot up in the Summer Hill area, because that development never held up from the day it was built. Those storm drains have been collapsing. So these areas here are going to help us keep track of the storm drains and the things that need to be repaired in them, and a lot of them need to be flushed out. They've accumulated a lot of debris in the pipe. There are a couple sections of pipe that are busted and need to be fixed or replaced. But for the most part, the storm drains graded out pretty good for the town. So that concludes the zoning map. The other thing is a sewer update, and this is really something that, you know, we've been talking about, and I don't think we can talk too much about what a monumental accomplishment it is for the Town of Rising Sun to have been able to complete this sewer plant, and in the manner in which we were able to complete it. You know, going all the way back to the court challenges to stop it, in which we lost a significant amount of time on court challenges, we had some problems in the review process with USDA, we had some challenges from out-of-state builders who didn't like the way it was being designed, and they, you know, we had the whole legal wrangle with the Circuit Court and MDE to try to get them to back us, to say, "You told us to build an XYZ sewer plant, you know, you've got to back us up from these challenges." So despite all of that, we were able to get the plant completed. And what I just wanted to show you here is, let me back up here to the beginning. So this is what the, for those who don't know, this is the, this was the old sewer plant, the lagoon. It's basically an 11-acre puddle of water that processes our sewage treatment. And you see, at that time, this is a photo image of 2011, 2012. The box was to represent where the sewer plant was going to be built at that time. So I just want to scroll through a couple pictures for you. This is the new wastewater treatment plant, and you can see in a comparison where the new plant was built at on-site here. These pictures don't go all the way back to the beginning, but just to scroll through them real quick, you can see, you know, some of the transformation that's taken place. These pictures are roughly back in March or April of 2013, thereabouts, and a lot of concrete structures in here, a ton of stone. If you guys remember, the town paid for about $450,000 of additional stone to be brought in, because the soils that were on-site were not suitable to be removed and then brought back in. We were not able to achieve the proper compaction. So that's something that was found out, you know, after the project begun, and there's a ton of stone in there. This is the headworks, you're going to see a picture of this later on. These are the channels of where the sewage comes right into the headworks facility itself. There were a lot of big, heavy equipment on-site for the two, three years that the plant was being built. These are Conex boxes. If you recall, we reported at one time, shortly after the last contractor left, we had somebody break into the Conex boxes, and we had some stuff stolen from out of those Conex boxes. But, you know, we were able to overcome that hurdle. Again, a lot of stone, a lot of concrete, you know, some different panoramic views of the site, some of the buildings that are being built. This is the headworks construction taking place down here. This is the inside of an empty clarifier, and they are very deep, and they're actually pretty scary. One of the things you might have heard me say regarding sewage is, we look at sewage, and we think it's just water. In reality, this water is very dangerous to be in, because you cannot get any buoyancy. And so when you look at one of the number-one ways that wastewater treatment plant operators get killed, and believe it or not, there's a lot who get killed, it's drowning, because they fall into the water, and not even a life vest, even though OSHA requires you to put the little life vest up there, it's not going to help you unless somebody gets it around you and they can pull you out. It's not going to keep you afloat. So this is how deep these are. These are moving parts that rotate around to keep the sewage moving, so, you know, they are very dangerous. This is a plant operations building that was being built. Here, you see Commissioner Walker, who is a sewer water commissioner during the last stretch of this project out in the wintertime. This is about March of 2015 here. And you start to see, it's amazing how quickly the weather broke, and we were actually able to get out there and start to grade, and this is basically two to three feet of fill that had to be brought back into the site, and this is, the Route 1 corridor is up here on your right-hand side where the trees are located at. You know, it's a shame that the lagoon is, in reality, the lagoon actually can be very pretty at certain times during the year with the algae and the growth over, and I have a couple pictures of that. But this is a headworks building, and the reason why this is significant is that when our project was going sideways with the previous contractor, we were told so many things that you can't do, you just can't do it, you can't do it. And so this was going to be a serious issue here, because employees would have to be out here in the dead of winter dealing with this equipment. You're going to see later on that, just basically getting the project back up and running, we were able to get a lot of equipment in there that originally, we were told by the previous contractor, that we were not going to be able to build. So this is, this is actually how high you can climb at the sewer plant. I'm not standing on any kind of ladder. This is one of the platforms where the sewage comes in to basically a system that devotes it in different directions. I'm standing up on the platform for that. You can see the grass is now settled back in after all that grading, grass is starting to grow back in there. You can see the colors of the lagoon I was talking about behind it, and yes, it has been over the years attractive for people who drive by and think, "Hey, what a nice place to swim." That has happened. And here's one thing I want to bring out. This dirt area right here is the property line for Wellington Manor. And Wellington Manor is the property that sued the town for $120 million, and we were successful in defending that lawsuit. But it's one of the problems that we had with our engineering firm, is that they actually located the sewer plant much closer to the property line than what was originally told. If you remember on the front end, we were talking about CAD drawings and things just not matching up. So the project has had issues from a design and regulatory approval standpoint from the beginning, but that's how close it is to the adjoining property line there. And this is the heart of the sewer plant. This is a three-ring orbital oxidation ditch. This plant is designed to take 500,000 gallons of flow per day. Right now, we're doing about 165,000 gallons of flow per day. And I'll just tell you this, right inside here, these turbine-type things, is the secret to wastewater treatment is not chemicals. You might think that you treat it like you do your pool, you put chlorine in there. And there are some chemicals that are put in, but the primary treatment of a wastewater treatment plant is done naturally, with bugs and organisms, organisms, and the introduction of oxygen and air. And so these big turbines here are actually some big paddle wheels that go, that turn around, that actually grab air molecules, believe it or not, throw it into the water and mix it up. So this, my point is, this is a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment plant. This is the top of the line of what's being built in the state of Maryland right now. So that's, to give you an update on wastewater treatment. Some things that are going to be happening is, we met with the State Highway last week, and State Highway is proposing to plant about 150 trees down at the, down at the location of the wastewater sewage treatment plant, because they have a requirement to plant trees as part of the roads that they upgrade. Basically, when they did Route 1 out here and repaved it, if you saw all those trees pop up on the side of the road, it's because they're required by the EPA to plant trees. And in one particular instance, up near Gibney's property, if you recall, I had said to you that Gibney's has a potential agreement with an accessory structure building company that wants to lease his land, but they don't want to have those sheds out there being blocked by the trees. So they approached us to see if we could basically lose some trees on the site. So if you remember where I talked about, our distance from the adjacent property line, we have the opportunity to plant a bunch of trees in there, because when you're doing this, we have to think about the fact that if that ever gets developed over there, the less that we want is residential properties opening right up to that wastewater treatment facility there. So we're going to get, the state is going to help us with some trees. The plant is operating great. We had MDE and USDA out this past Monday for a meeting, and they were looking at samples, and they could not believe how clear the water actually was coming out of there. So we're blessed with the fact that we didn't have any hiccups with the operation of the plant. The lagoon, there's been a question about what we're doing with the lagoon. The lagoon is no longer discharging out into the stream, just simply because all the sewage flow has been directed into the plant. There has been a question of what do we need to do with the lagoon, because you have all that rainwater falling on it, and we can't afford to have the lagoon go, you know, rise up and discharge out of it. Our engineers have assured us that, given the 11 acres of water surface, there's enough evaporation, and the really neat thing is that the only thing we are discharging into the lagoon right now is the solids. And although we are processing 160, 170,000 gallons of sewage, the plant is operating efficiently, that we're only discharging about 1,200 gallons of sludge into the lagoon a day. So you look at the, you know, the 160,000 that's coming in, only 1,200 is being put into the lagoon. So that's, you know, it might sound boring, guys, but that's like a huge $3 million to $4 million savings for the taxpayers of this community, because we don't have to rush to do anything with the lagoon or to deal with our sludge processing at this point. We're going to shut the power down to the lagoon, but we're not going to go in there and cut wires or anything like that. We're going to leave it the way it is right now, just shut the power off, so we're not paying for the electrical there. There are some aerators, and some of the pictures you might have seen, or if you've driven by, they look like fountains coming up out of the lagoon. That is how air, I talked about air in the new plant. Air is used at the old plant to help with the process. Those aerators are going to be disconnected and pulled out, because now that there's going to be no movement of water in the lagoon, it will freeze up pretty solid come the wintertime. So we have equipment that has no value to us, per se, in this new treatment plant, but it could have resale value down the road or whatever. So we want to make sure that we pull those items out. Some exciting things on the development side is, we have gotten an annexation request, which hasn't happened for a long time here in Rising Sun. That's what's going on around us, is people are actually excited about this. They're excited about what the town is doing, and they're now talking about investing dollars in our community, which has a trickle-down effect. So we do have an annexation request for the Reynolds Track over here, which is on Pearl Street, between Pearl Street and the Route 1 corridor. I've met with that developer a couple of times about that, and let me say this for the Historic Commission and for the Rising Sun Arts Council. I've been meeting with about four or five different developers in different areas, and I am trying to barter buildings or facilities for the Arts Council and the Historic Commission. Over at the Reynolds Track, they have that house, it's, you know, easily over 200 years of age. They have already conceptually said, "Yeah, if we can annex into the town, and if we can move forward with our development, we'd be more than happy to donate that house to the Historic Museum." So that, you know, that's the kind of, you know, discussions that we're having here, that people are knocking on our door. The other thing that I, we had another developer come forward for the Wellington Manor track. If you remember, the realtor came in a while ago, and somebody wanted to use it for agricultural mushroom farms, and we all, you know, drew a deep breath, no pun intended, over the mushroom farm. But that realtor was just, felt so confident that, you know, "That's it, that's all anybody's going to use it, is for agricultural." Well, he was actually approached by two different developers, who said, "Hey, now that the sewer plant is done, I'm ready to move on this." And as I reported at the last meeting, one of the developers apparently doesn't have the the same hurdles of financial backing needs that other developers have. So there have been some real discussions about the town getting paid impact fees sooner than later and the helping us with the myriad of things that we have going on here at the same time. So again, there's another example of a lot of the exciting conversations that are taking place. Dr. Brandenburg's property down here on Pearl Street, I've met with several different realtors and developers about different ideas down there. The Spicers down here across from Harrington, they have been trying to sell their property right now. We received a request for the Crab Place down here by Chrome Dairy to relocate over to Spicers, and he's, his business has been going so well that he actually, actually wants to pump a lot of money into the property to, to expand it. And, you know, those are economic dollars that are coming into the community here. We also have a business or a piece of land out near the Fire Company that was connected to the Knutson Track at one time. That gentleman is very interested in potentially putting some type of pud. And if you remember, and it's really too small to be a pud, but in theory, the idea is a combination of maybe a Dunkin' Donuts on the front end, some type of small and low-profile business going back to several houses. So, you know, not put the houses out on Big Highway, but have commercial on the front end of that and then have the, the houses behind that. So we're in discussions with them on that. And then the other thing that's really happening in town, which is really pretty cool, and we saw an indication of that last night, was Street Lamp Productions. And, you know, for years, we've had people coming to our community saying we have to do something for the kids. And now we have a business entity that's coming in here that that is their primary focus, is to do something for kids. And they're, they're, they're trying to operate in a building that I'm, I'm sure maybe if it was a little bit bigger and had a couple, you know, a little bit different on the exterior would be more ideal, but it'll work. It will work, and, and we're going to make sure that it works because it is a good business for the town. They've been having Zumba classes in there that have been well-attended. Last night, they had basically registration of, so some kids could come in and audition. I think they were surprised by the number of parents who actually brought kids down. We did have a little bit of some parking issues and some things that had to be worked out, but from a zoning standpoint, they have the available ground up there to provide for the off-street parking. I know there is, I, I've been told that people that have been here longer than I have, have said that that stretch of Valley View used to be no parking on either side. I have spoken to our public works employees. They don't ever recall it being no parking on both sides. So like any other road, we're, you know, have to make an evaluation and maybe make a determination on if there's going to be parking on one side. But the reality is, from the business standpoint, they should have enough parking for off-street parking. But one of the things I think everybody needs to, and I don't, I don't want to devalue the concerns that people have when they get upset about something, but public roads are public roads, and they're open to be parked on. And so unless we have restraints that stop vehicles from passing or whatever, we really can't stop business entities, no matter who it is. We can't stop people who live in residential homes from parking on public streets where it's allowed. But I don't, I don't want to give the impression that this business needs that parking out there to survive. They don't. Last night was a glitch. Nobody expected that kind of turnout. And so they're working really hard, and again, the, the interest in the community has just been phenomenal, and that's, I think that's going to be a gem for our community moving forward. Bryant's Grace, an update on the legal action on Bryant's Grace. If you recall, we are in the midst of dealing with a lot of the bad development that happened back in the early 2000s and through the 90s and 2000s. And like I said before, the, you know, the chickens are coming home to roost on some of this stuff. And we've had problems up in Summer Hill that we've had to spend money on that we shouldn't have had to because of defective work, and now we're starting to see that in Ryan Drive, you know, we've been talking about over and over. But Bryant's Grace is one where the developer wanted to walk away from his obligations from that. And as I said before, and I, I want this to be known publicly, is that the municipality protects itself by letters of credit. And they get banks, the, the developers are required to go to a bank and get the financial assurance that if the developer does not complete the project or bellies up on the project, that the residents don't get, don't get dealt with defective streets. Well, the town of Rising Sun operated under the belief that it had that, and Cecil Bank sent us notices every year saying that they had those letters of credit, and they wanted an update all the time, and we kept giving them an update on the status of those developments and telling them we're not taking dedication on them because the developer has walked away. Well, Cecil Bank is now taking the position that they are just going to null void the letters of credit. And so any repairs that have to be made in the Bryant's Grace development are going to come on the backs of the taxpayers of Ri, of Rising Sun if there's any need to do things. But we don't have as-built plans. We have some defects up there that have not been taken care of. The county has issues with the stormwater retention ponds that have not been signed off, and everybody's in the same boat, and it's just unfortunate that our community bank has decided not to honor it. And the one area where we have a little bit of egg on our face is that our administrations at that time, we cannot produce a, a copy, of us having a copy of a signed letter. We can't produce that. It's not unusual because there's lots of documents from back in the 90s and 2000s that we can't produce. But the thing that's aggravating is, okay, we don't have our document, but this bank went for the last four years sending us letters saying, oh, yeah, you have this letter of credit, we want to release it. And now they're going to try to create a loophole and take a position of not having to pay that letter of credit simply because we are not able to produce our copy of the letter of credit. So we've been, we've taken the steps to notify them legally that we're not happy with that and are not going to accept that position. So I'll keep you up to date on, on that.
Calvin, that would have been back in the early 2000s that letter was signed.
Yes, like 2003, 2004.
Somewhere around there. So a few years before you were here. A few years before you came.
Yes. Valley View parking spaces. Commissioner Althenreth, you had met with the residents down there, and one of the things that you wanted to check off the list was the striping. We have secured a vendor. He will be in next week to do that. He's supposed to let me know Wednesday. He's going to need two days to do it. We really need the residents of Valley View to work with us. We're not going to come down and stripe all the lines at one time, but we're going to ask people to move from one section one day so we can stripe it and then move to the other section. We also, we're going to see if we can get our street sweeper to come in there because I was looking at it today. There's a lot of debris laying around, grass clippings.
They don't come anymore.
Yeah, the problem with the way you guys, the way you guys are required to park makes it difficult. So I'm thinking if we could get, you know, people move the night before, get the street sweeper in there early in the morning, and then the line striper will come in afterwards. The other thing is that, you know, we're going to have to get unregistered, you know, vehicles that are not legally conveyable on the road have got to get out of there. We can't, they're not supposed to be in those public spaces anyway, and so that's part of, those are one of the things that are going to need to get cleaned out of there, or we're not going to be able to stripe the road like people want us to do. So we're going to ask the residents of Rising Sun to work with us on that. Ryan Drive here, the bids for Ryan Drive are going out Friday. The advertisement is being posted Wednesday. The engineer is going to handle the bid packets. In other words, the contractors will contact the engineering firm to get the bid packages. We're estimating that bids will be due back on October 8th. The engineer will review them like he's done in the past and make a recommendation to the board, and the entire project should be done right, right around or before Thanksgiving. And let me say this, if we run into any kind of delays and we start to head up into Thanksgiving, we will make sure that we accommodate people up there also. That is going to be an extensive repair. We're looking at that being about $300,000. Again, that's that taxpayer's money and not the developer's money that's paying for this. So that's $300,000 we need to fix that. But it's Sunrise Circle. It's not Sunrise. It's from the intersection of Sunrise on Ryan Drive from Sunrise, that cross street to the cul-de-sac, and that's estimated to be over $300,000 just to do that. It's not replacing the water line either. It's just rebuilding the road base, taking about eight to 12 inches of dirt and material out of there, putting four to six inches of stone back in, two and a half inches of base coat, and then two and a half inches of top coat on it. And that's why the expenses are so high, because we're basically going to be rebuilding the road. So now I appreciate you guys bearing with me, but it's, you know, a lot of information that I wanted to get out to keep everybody up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you, Town Administrator. I did want to say, and I think I speak for the entire board when I say this, to all the candidates that are running for office, come get to know us. Come speak to us. Inevitably, whoever wins this upcoming election, you will have to work with the board that is here. So come talk with us, get to know us. I know most of the candidates that are on that page, but it certainly wouldn't help to get to know them a little bit better. So I'm looking forward to serving with whoever wins this next election, and I know I speak for the board when I say, we hope that we can continue to move Rising Sun forward in a positive way. Next up is Commissioner comments. Commissioner Althenreth, you were first.
Well, just a little bit to add to the details Calvin brought up, because we were late getting this information in to where I could meet with him and report on it myself. But Ms. Maynard, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to get down and meet with you in the past couple of weeks in person, but I've been down there several times as we've been trying to work on things that we can get done. They did get down and trim that tree around that stop sign.
Not before the stop sign.
Yeah, so I'm glad that Ron and the guys were able to get down. They saw it wasn't too big of a deal, so they went ahead and took care of it instead of putting the burden on the resident there. But the tree's very healthy, and it'll probably grow back out over by next spring. So, and as Calvin alluded to, the other two big things that are coming up with Ryan Drive and the line striping down there, I don't think we can change the size of that area around the fire hydrant because the, the width is what we can, are concerned with, and it's, it's a legal code, so we can't change that right now. So.
But now the one, the, the fire hydrant at, I'm sorry, at the bottom of the hill doesn't have that much space around it?
Well, which one are you talking about? Because I'm, the one I remember is the one up by Mr., near Mr. Barr's house.
Into Louise Court, where they cut the trees. There's a fire hydrant right there.
Okay, I don't remember there being, the, the one up at the top of the hills, one, it stands out to me because it's right in front of somebody's house, so.
At the bottom of there.
Yeah, all right. That's something I'll have to look at again because it's, it didn't make the list that day. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Althenreth. Commissioner Scully, before I let you speak this evening, I just wanted to make some brief comments, and that is that I am very sorry that you are not a candidate for Commissioner on this next election. I am personally a little disappointed in Howard Bank not allowing this to happen, but I am proud to be able to serve with you. You know as well as I do from where we started, from appointing you, I was a little uneasy in the beginning. I didn't know you very well, and you've ended up being a positive role model for our community, and you've done a lot for the Public Safety Department. So I thank you for your service, and hopefully you'll stick around. So, all right, go ahead.
Thank you for your kind words, and I would like to continue to help out where I can, and I know all of you will call me and let me know where that will, will be. And other than that, I, I don't have a report tonight, but I do appreciate what you said, and, and this is a great board to work with, and I've enjoyed the last year. And while I am technically a lame duck, I still have things to, to do, and I'm still engaged in what needs to be done between now and the, and the first meeting in November, so I don't want anybody to forget that, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scully.
Commissioner Warnock. So we had a, I've had a couple of good things happen in the last few weeks. We had the Rising Sun Arts Council had a artist up here, it was a, what's his last name? Tim Jackson. I think it was Tim Jackson was the primary artist, and there was actually another artist, which.
Trisha Jepson.
Thank you. And the, it was quite a large turnout up here. I mean, there were probably, you know, just guesstimating, 60 to 80 people that showed up throughout the evening. I, I know about 40 of them signed in, in the museum, which is probably the largest turnout the museum's had in a while. So I think that's a good partnership between the Arts Council and the Historic Preservation Commission, and I look forward to seeing that continue and, and seeing that grow. The One Eye Jacks were rained out, but they're looking to reschedule that concert for another time. I'm not exactly sure what their timeframe is for that, but they, they have committed to the Arts Council to still have that, that concert. So last weekend, we had Cinderella, which was a new release that came out that week, and we had a really phenomenal turnout. I mean, we had over 100 people show up for the movie, and, I mean, we were, they just kept coming and coming, and I was like, wow, this is really surprising. I wasn't quite sure if we were going to have the turnout with the, the temperature get kind of chilly, but, and people stayed. A lot of times, like the little kids and such, and families start leaving and, because the kids just don't make it through the movie. In this case, I, there weren't maybe two or three people that left through the movie with some children that couldn't quite make it, but it was, it was a pretty good crowd, so that was exciting. On Saturday morning, we had the AP Environmental Sciences class from, Greg Stickler's class from Rising Sun High School was in Veterans Park, learning about turbidity and microorganisms and all kinds of fun stuff. So they were here for about two hours doing water sampling and looking at the water quality from above where the current, the, the project that's getting ready to occur is, and then the water quality below. So I actually haven't had a chance to get with him, but they plan on doing, over the course of the, over a few years, they want to come back and do sampling and as the project's occurring, see how the water quality changes over that time. So we're, it's kind of exciting that we have a base measurement now, and now we can look and actually see what the results of that project are. This, or tomorrow, it's actually Tuesday already, so tomorrow being Wednesday, we have a tree planting over at Veteran Park from 5:30 to 7:00. And so we're going to be planting about 46 trees, I believe, back in the wetlands. And, yeah, so we're, you can sign up there, actually, when this meeting's over, I'm going to post a link on our Facebook to register for the, it's the Stream Clean, or Clean Stream Alliance, I believe, is the website that we've been using to do the registration. But that's being run by Rupert Rosetti and Brian Lightner and the Town of Rising Sun. So, and I believe that is all I have to report on.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. I just wanted to say a big thanks to Commissioner Warnock for showing all the movies this summer. Our summer movies in the park have become a stalwart event of the Town of Rising Sun, and people may not realize that he donates his time to show these movies to families in our town. And we are very lucky to have two business sponsors this year, which were Martin's Food Market and Armstrong, which graciously agreed to sponsor all of the movies in the park that we had this year. So I thank them so much for coming out, and I'm excited for next season to see what's going to come. So I know it's going to get bigger and better. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
As I move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.